Calling a meeting to order. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's Tuesday, March 8th at 6:30 PM. Meeting eighteen twenty-two. Um, it's being held on Zoom and in person at Town Hall. Um, our recording secretary is on Zoom, so if she can't get your name, we may have to ask her name a couple of times just to make sure she can hear you. We have a forum with all our regular members present. And we also have our alternate, Dave Lee's. Do you have any added agenda? We have a legal notice. For, the applicant is Walmart. And the legal notice says, East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, we have a public hearing on Tuesday, March 8th at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published in the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. Their application is PZ twenty twenty-two dash one. And Walmart at forty-four Prospect Hill Road proposes to construct a grocery pickup expansion and is requesting a reduction in the bulk parking requirements previously approved under general development plan map zero nine two, block seventeen, block thirty, the zone is M1. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the town website. Any persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comment to the board regarding the application. This notice ran in the Journal Inquirer February 12th and February twenty-fifth. We also have a legal notice. Where East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission that we will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 8th, twenty twenty-two. At 6:30 PM, details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. The commission is proposing zoning amendments pertaining to accessory apartments as of right of use with a single-family residential units. And a new planned commercial development district, including uses, requirements, and design considerations. A full copy of the proposed text is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comment to the board regarding this application. This legal notice ran in the Journal Inquirer February seventeenth and February twenty-fourth.
Thanks for your response, ma'am.
Okay, public participation. Is there anyone from the public that has an item not listed on the agenda that they would like to raise? Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Next up is approval of minutes. So we have the minutes that Peg prepared for regular meeting eighteen twenty-one. It was held February twenty-second, twenty-two. Does anybody have any changes they think need to be made or corrections to the minutes? If everybody is happy, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for regular meeting eighteen twenty-one, held on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Dave is voting for you and Dave is voting in the affirmative. So Peg, that's five affirmative votes with Frank abstaining and Dave voting. Minutes are approved. Proceed of applications. Ruth, do we have any? Okay. Anything under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, and road acceptance?
No.
Okay. We have a continued public hearing on, um, PZ twenty twenty-two dash O two, two sixty-eight South Main Street. Zone change from B two to R one. The owner and applicant are guilt to this. We now have a new memo from Mike Demato, our consulting planner, that gives us a couple of possible motions. Is, before we close the public hearing, are there any additional comments or comments on Mike Demato's memo? Anybody on Zoom who has additional comments? Okay, if there's no additional comments, and anybody in the audience who wants to comment on this, it's a public hearing. Okay, hearing done. A motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ, excuse me, twenty twenty-two dash zero two for a zone change application at two sixty-eight South Main Street from a B two to an R one. Owner applicant is guilty to this.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, Peg. Um, the hearing is closed and we will take it up on the agenda under new business later. We have a new public hearing on the town-initiated text amendment for Planned Commercial Development Regulation, Section eight one seven, which would be a new section. I'm assuming we should have them release two regulations separately. So, um, how about I turn the ball over to our consultant, Mike, to present this application?
Okay. So, um, I think I heard you correctly. Want to start with the Development District?
Yes, that's the way the agenda is laid out.
All right, so, um, a number of months ago, we started talking about the idea that we create a, a new type of zoning regulation, which essentially is a a traditional special development district, but has two different paths for a property owner or really anybody to obtain approval. The traditional development, so the zoning regulation which you're considering is the subject of the public hearing tonight, would create what's called the Planned Commercial Development District and would, would provide both options to a developer or someone who is looking to make a project, get a, obtain a project approval for a site that met the eligibility requirements, which are listed in subsection three. And, and just to kind of go over those, it, it must be in an area designated as Route Five Corridor, Industrial Core, and Northern Business Corridor in the most recently adopted P O C D. It shall include a minimum district size of at least four acres and be delineated on the applicant's master plan, subject to approval by the commission. So I guess just for the benefit of, of anybody who's, who's in the room or, or listening, I will kind of just quickly go over the differences between the two processes. The traditional process would involve a, a pre-application staff conference, and then they would submit a, a special permit and zone change application, which would include the submission of a, a concept plan at about a seventy percent level design. We would have a public hearing for the zone change and the special permit, and we would review and ultimately approve what is, will be referred to as the master plan. They, so the commission would then issue a decision. They would then have that approval and the, the zone change for the property. They would then go back and prepare a hundred percent site plan submission at a hundred percent level design, which would then come back to the commission for review. If, if the hundred percent level plans meet the, the design criteria based on the seventy percent approval, right, that the use is the same, the, the, the building size is roughly the same, the parking, you know, all those things are, are largely what was represented at the seventy percent design. Then the last step is a site plan. There's no public hearing and the benefit to that is they can come in, once they've got a tenant, they can get a quick approval, and they can be the speed to market, which is what everybody is interested in. I think I've said that before, is something that is defined. Because under statute, administrative approvals under site plan have to be done within sixty-five days. So that's the traditional process. The proactive process is the same steps, they're just in a different order. The zone change application comes in at the front, just as the same, but only a thirty percent design plan. We have a public hearing on the zone change only and, and review of the same master plan. The commission issues a decision. They then come back for their hundred percent design, just as they would with the other process. The difference here is because we didn't have a, a hearing on the special permit at the front end with the zone change, we have it at the back end. So, on the, on, on the one hand, you have traditional special development district, which is, follows the steps that a normal process would, and then the proactive process would allow for someone to come and get this approval ahead of time without having to spend, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars on engineering before they have a tenant. And then once they get that tenant, come back in. So it provides that flexibility. You know, we've met Ruth and myself, we've done a lot of talking with, with prospective developers and business owners, et cetera, and the amount of time it takes to go through an approval and, and understanding that process and what might be involved is, is a big question mark. So allowing this proactive process to happen will hopefully create something more tangible and, and get these sites more shovel-ready.
Okay with you if I share my screen just for like graphics sake?
Yeah, yep. So, you know, the, the reg is a little bit text-heavy because the difference between a special development district and a traditional approval or a traditional zone, the reason why we're not just creating this as a new zone, is because under the development district process, if somebody submits an application and you approve a master plan and it shows the building to be twenty-six feet from the property line, then that effectively becomes the zoning requirement for that, that project. So the development district creates little mini zones essentially for each project that it's approved under. And the zoning criteria, we don't say, the bulk standards are setbacks are this, and, and height is that, and coverage is this. We set the high and the low. But each project will be approved with bulk standards for that project only. So that is why we refer to it as a master plan, because they will be reviewed for compliance based on their master plan, not based on the zoning regulations, if that makes sense. And so Ruth has the, the graphics up here to give you a better idea of kind of how that looks. And like I said, I can go through the, the whole document if you want, or I can take questions, whatever the commission would be most comfortable with.
Additional questions of mine from the commission? I think you've done a good job explaining it, Mike, and my understanding of why we are proceeding to do this is to bring, I'll say, new and creative ways to get economic development in East Windsor. And the traditional path tends to be slow and not effective for, I'll say, big or unusual developers. And this hopefully will make, um, East Windsor more development-friendly.
The only other thing that I would add, just because they're different than our regulations, and it's, and it is a little responsive to, I think it was your, your suggestion, Anne. So we are providing them with a five percent bonus if they build a LEED-certified building, which means it's incredibly efficient. We are requiring that they employ low-impact development standards for dealing with drainage, which, which essentially means rather than just capture the water and letting it go back into the ground, they're going to capture the water and treat it in some way so that they can deal with what might be in it, so that the water that's returned to the ground is, is kept on their property and is treated in some way. The, the last thing is that we did include a provision for EV charging. And, and so that was added to the subsection nine, under design considerations.
I was very happy to see that. Okay, this is a public hearing. So is there anybody in the room who would like to offer comment on this? No one? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment? Are there any other documents that need to go on the record related to this?
I have a memo that was received from the first election today regarding the Planned Commercial Development Regulations. And I can read it into the record. Great. All right. Says, please accept these comments in support of the proposed text amendment, adding Section eight seventeen to the town's zoning regulations. The intention of adding Planned Commercial Development Regulations is to encourage economic development within the community. By adopting the regulations as presented, the commission can facilitate a more expeditious process on the part of the developers looking to cite new businesses within the community while continuing to meet statutory regulatory oversight requirements necessary to protect the interests of the town. These regulations will allow the town to work proactively with property owners along economic development borders as identified in the town's plan of conservation and development, perform conceptual plan development and review, and then market properties ready for more immediate development. The text amendment allows the town to adopt a key strategy that we have seen work in other communities by preparing parcels for a shovel-ready status. We know that businesses, when considering locations, are concerned with the time between the beginning of an application and the completion of a project. We also understand that under the system in Connecticut, the planning, commission process can create a bottleneck for development even under the best of circumstances. By passing these regulations, we allow for a significant portion of the permit application review process to commence prior to a final design plan being determined. Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have any comments from Craig for the record? Yes. They, uh, no others. Um, no other comments on the record? Again, we'll give the room another chance at commenting. Okay, anybody who's participating via Zoom who would like to comment? Um, we've talked about this for quite some time. I don't know if anybody feels the need to keep the public hearing open for more comment. I think we're trying to do something to make East Windsor more development-friendly, and we have parts of town, the Route Five Corridor, the, um, one forty corridor, and our industrial zone where they're planned for development and we haven't seen it come. So the intent of this is to facilitate development in those areas. If there's, people feel they have all they need to make a decision, we could close the public hearing today. It's your choice. Everything's good? Okay, then a motion to close would be in order.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing on the town-initiated text amendment for Planned Commercial Development Regulation.
Is there a second to that? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Are you comfortable adopting it tonight? Okay, then a motion to adopt this new section to the regulations would be in order, and when would it become effective? To say that in regulations, or in fifteen days, right?
Yeah, I would.
On the motion, fifteen days.
Fifteen days from publication, from publication would be, would cover it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the text amendment for a Planned Commercial Development Regulation and allow it to take effect within fifteen days of posting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Peg, that's unanimous. That's been adopted by the commission. It is very. Now we have another town initiated, initiated text amendment for accessory apartments as, and as of right use. It's provisions to Section four oh six and four oh seven of the regulations. Um, alternative to you to present, Mike?
So, uh, this is, these two sections are proposed to be modified in response to PA twenty-one twenty-nine, which was the result of all the legislative changes during the last legislative session. A couple of things came out of that. In summary, towns cannot say how large a house has to be. You can't say that a minimum, the minimum floor area for a single-family home is nine hundred square feet or, or whatever. You can say how large, you can limit the, the size on the top end, but you can't say how much they, how, how large they must be. So the, the changes to four oh six basically just point to the minimum, minimum standards of the applicable codes that, that are still effective, which would be building, housing, and/or health codes. And the Section four oh seven, which is the town's existing language for accessory apartments, is also being modified to reflect statutory changes, which basically said that towns can no longer require accessory dwelling units to be allowed by special permit. They had to be by right. So what we did was we, we took out some of the criteria, which was a little bit more subjective, and we replaced it with stuff that, that still speaks to some of the criteria by which you might review it or, or that you might issue previously conditions related to, but is compliant with the statutes. So again, we're, we're no longer talking about that the construction must be in character with, you know, the home or the neighborhood, because again, that's subjective, and, and we can no longer regulate to that. We're not requiring, because we can't, that the, the unit be occupied by a member of the family of the owner. So all of the changes that you're seeing there are largely related to what the statutes now say we have to do.
So basically, this brings our regulations into compliance with changes in state law last session. And are there any questions from commission members from Mike?
Yeah, Mike, um, items F and J, are they identical? We need to strike J.
Yeah, I think we, I think we might have talked about this and I, we have the, the final version. I think it, it remained in the clean version, but yeah, that, we don't need both.
Right, so editing, this is either just the spread J.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment?
Yeah. I can't not say anything ever.
I, I need you to identify yourself.
I got it. John Burnham, one seventy-eight, scan it really soon. Does this also affect the lot size? All these two family houses, basically, houses with in-laws are going to be. Um, does it matter what lot size you have anymore?
You'll have to meet the bulk areas, clients, if you're going to have it detached.
Well, in-law partners, I assume is attached. This is not allowing a detached building. So then every one acre lot or thirty thousand square foot lot can have two buildings, two units of it. That just means? You have a, back in the day, back in the day, I built a twelve-hundred-square-foot ranch on thirty thousand square feet. Now I can have that one plus a detached housing unit on that lot. Correct? Is that what this means?
So I, I would, I would just point a couple of things out. Number one, item D talks about the size, so it, it's not, anybody can add anything. The difference between an ADU and a duplex are that we are inherently capping the size. So this is not something that would allow for someone to build an additional dwelling unit equal to the size of the primary unit. They still need to meet all the health requirements for septic. So if they're on septic, they need to demonstrate that they have adequate water and septic. They also need to demonstrate that they meet all those standards, as Ruth mentioned, for bulk. So that would be setbacks and coverage and so the only real fundamental change here is that, you know, before you could put a shed in your backyard, well, now if it meets these requirements, that shed could be replaced with what is being referred to as an accessory dwelling unit.
Can exceed nine hundred square feet. So, and this is state mandated.
Yes.
State mandated. So I'm just going to bet that they've literally turned every single-family lot into a two-family lot. State mandated, so I'm just gonna bet that they've literally turned every single family lot into a two-family lot. You're gonna double the size of your housing unit. You could double the house, size of your housing units in the town of East Windsor and not create one more lot. Just saying, I know you have to do it with the state.
So Mike, the utilities have to be permanent.
Correct. Yeah, so this, this is not like um, a temporary healthcare structure or anything else. This, this building would have to meet all of the building codes for insulation, water, service, electricity, et cetera.
I'm good. That was my question.
Okay, any other comments in the room? Any comments from people attending um, over the computer via Zoom? Okay. Hearing no comments, did we have any other documents to put on the record with this? Nothing from Crog? Well, Crog commended us for. More of it. Okay. Then, do people feel like there's adequate record or need for more information or we're ready to close the public hearing? Then a motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the town initiated text amendment for accessory apartments as an, as of right use.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll just say for the record, this is required by state statute. And I think the positive part of the intent is when somebody has an elderly parent they need to care for, it gives them a way to um, provide space at home if they're lost and they can meet all the requirements.
The only other thing that I would just add for anybody who's, who's listening is that I know that by, we have it listed as an as of right use, which is different than on, on the wetland side. They still have to demonstrate compliance to staff and obtain necessary approvals. This is not something that anyone can just go and do. So there's still, this criteria will still be evaluated.
So would you get a zoning permit before a building permit to do this?
Yes. And if they went in for building permit first, then the building department's gonna be flagging it for us. Yeah.
Okay, the hearing has, oh, and no other discussion than um, all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye, that's, hey, that's unanimous. So since the hearing's closed, we've discussed this a number of times, does somebody want to move to approve it with the correction of deleting J?
I make a motion that we adopt the town initiated text amendment for accessory apartments as an, as of right use with the modification of eliminating item J from section four oh seven point one.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, okay, that's unanimous. Okay, it's been approved and our next order of business is PZ twenty twenty two dash one forty four Prospect Hill Road. Site plan modification of Walmart is the applicant. And they've requested an extension until our meeting of April twelfth. Um, that does not give them much time, then has to be decided that night if they haven't satisfied.
They have requested a sixty five day extension.
Okay.
Follow on emails to them.
Okay.
On my second, they made that discuss for sixty five days.
So do we need to continue this till our April, April twelfth meeting? Okay, is there a motion to continue application PZ twenty two dash one to our April twelfth, twenty twenty two meeting?
I'll make a motion that we continue the application of PZ twenty twenty two dash zero one forty four Prospect Hill Road site plan modification by Walmart until our April twelfth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion and the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, that's unanimous, that's been continued. Um, so the next order of business is PZ twenty two dash oh three for two ninety eight South Main Street. It's a site plan review for new construction, auto sales. Um, we have since the last meeting received comments from staff. And my understanding is it's still pending with wetlands, so um, yep. I don't know.
We have uh, heard from the town engineer. And we have Mr. Arsenal Arnold phone. Has made modifications to the drainage report and the site plan based on comments received. And the biggest hurdle right now for them is buffering. I have larger plans for.
It don't matter, whatever you got.
I think in that sentence, I just handed you in the back there. Well, if you're ready, if you want to share your screen, I'd dream you would follow.
Okay, thank you, Bob Arsenal, the engineer for the project. Also with me tonight is Arvin Prasad, who's the applicant. So I'd like to share the screen.
I just clicked the co-host button, so you should be able to do that.
Okay, there we go. This is actually the very first sheet, which is just basically the survey for the property. So I won't spend a whole lot of time in this. It just basically shows where we are on South Main Street. We're just north of the town line. And this, this obviously South Windsor over here. I'll just jump very quickly to the site plan. Okay, basically this is the, the site plan as we discussed last time. Hasn't really changed any as far as other than the front radiuses here are now twenty six feet, which was what was requested. The drainage discharge has changed a little bit based on Lynn Norton's request. We now have a, a plunge pool and a level spreader both. One of the things that Lynn wanted was in the drainage, he wanted us, because of the recent rainstorms, he wanted me to analyze it for back-to-back hundred-year storms, which I did. And I submitted the full, full report to Lynn, discussed it with him on the phone. And I understand you have a memo basically, which now says that he's satisfied with the drainage study. The only thing that he would like, I have spotted some potential test hole locations throughout the site. And the, the soils classifications for this basically are a sand and gravel for the, for the bulk of the area, especially where the system's gonna go. So we will be doing test holes prior to construction. Lynn thought that that was fine. If the, if the infiltration rate changes a little bit, we always have the flexibility of increasing the size of the system if we have to. We do have pre-treatment in a, uh, the, the catch basin is a double chamber, which removes both oils and sediment. So that, that is the drainage system itself. We have sanitary sewer and water, obviously, uh, off of Route five. So I will now jump ahead. I just wanted to point out too, that the property to the north, which you see here shaded in, this is a shed which is still on our property. And this is the mobile home itself. From the corner of the mobile home to the property line is four feet. There, four feet here and the deck is, is exactly one foot off the property line. So that, that obviously is, is an issue when it comes to determining buffers and so forth. As far as the landscape plan goes, what we're now proposing, because Michelle Leip and South Windsor did request a row of arbor bides along this line. So we are including six-foot-high arbor bides planted at a, a six-foot sp- spacing along this line. We also were proposing arbor bides here instead of, we had a shade tree, I think, there last time. We're proposing arbor bides here. And the lighting, it's, I'll get, I'll get into the buffer more, I have another exhibit for that. But as far as lighting goes, in the red here, you see, these are the locations for the four post lights. I guess it was a little unclear as to where they were. We have one at the end of this area, um, over here next to the entrances, one to the rear of the property and one on this side of the property. I changed the post, post lights now to be colonial style on a four-foot, fourteen-foot high post. They would be completely, completely shielded so that they would just cast the light into the, into the site itself. And we still have uh, light pack wall units and I'll show you where those are gonna be in a second. One of the things I'd like to talk about, which, because this came up as, as an issue, buffers themselves. This blue line represents if there was a fifty-foot buffer from the northern property line. The red line indicates a hundred-foot buffer. So you, as you can see, both of them would render the site pretty much unusable. So we're, we're asking is that you re- reduce substantially the buffer requirement. And uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Prasad is actually willing to put up a six-foot-high vinyl fence along this property line through here. All along this property line to give some, some, some buffering plus the plantings to the property at the north. The only problem is we don't really wanna put that fence right along the property line, because I mean, it would only be about two feet away from this deck here. So what, what I was proposing or was thinking about, and I'd like the commission's input on this. I was thinking about putting the fence right along the back of the pavement through here. And it's about a hundred feet from this location to the front here. It's, it's, and it would, it would give us the protection here. So we'd end up with um, about a ten to twelve-foot area here, uh, a green area with a fence and the arbor bides on this side of it. So that's, that's what we'd like to do, because as you can see, if we stick with the buffer, it pretty much renders the property unusable. Let me go to, alright, this is, this shows the, this is the sedimentation structure for discharge prior to the infiltrators. And this is what we're now talking about for a colonial, more of a colonial style lantern rather than shoebox, which is more of a, for a large commercial development. And these are the wall packs that we're proposing for the uh, for the building itself. And I can show you that right here. Alright, this is the building and Mr. Prasad can, can address this a little bit more. This is the same one you saw last time, but I'm only showing this to show you, basically, this is the front of the building, which would be facing Route five. Pardon?
Screen didn't change.
You didn't, you didn't get this?
We're still on the wall packs.
It's a different window, you'll have to do a new share to get it to swap over.
Okay, hold on, sorry about that. Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
See the building now?
Yeah.
Is it there, Michael?
I can see it, yep.
Okay, yeah, this, this is the, the side that would be facing Route five. And what we propose is to put one of the, one of the lights along this entrance. And then um, probably one between each of, each of these doors, one here, one here. And then with the, the parking lot lights, that should be enough uh, to cover the building. Now, as far as the aesthetics of the building go, I know there was some talk about maybe breaking up the front. And uh, Mr. Prasad could probably explain a little bit more what he intends as far as the building goes. Arvin, you wanna talk to them a little bit about that? You left unmute, Arvin. There you go.
Okay, so for the front entrance here, um, we, we were proposing like commercial glass doors. It'll be double glass doors and there'll be, this window here will be bigger, probably like a double window glass, like double this size, double this size. And there'll also be a canopy coming out um, right in front of the entrance here. And uh, Bob mentioned, uh, you guys would wanna see some different color coatings and so on. So we, I, I'm okay with making the building uh, have the, the required curb appeal and color codes that would make it look presentable for the town from the front.
Yeah, he's still working with the uh, the manufacturer of the building to go.
They um, they actually, so when we submit uh, construction plans, we will have a, a more accurate visual of what the building would look like with colors and everything.
There's only other one, one other item I'd like to share. You'll probably have to hit. Is this, did this survey pop up? Okay, this is, this is a survey that was done for the, for the properties a while back. And as you can see, the only reason I'm, I'm showing this is because the mobile home was, was built over the property line. And that's been corrected, other than the shed in the back. But the only thing I'm bringing up is because there's been some talk about possibilities of some fill in the rear here, the rear corner of the build of the, of our property. And from what I can tell, looking at these topography, you know, and the, some of the new topography that was done by the surveyor, it looks like this area was filled, I think, not the fault of these people. I think they assumed that this was their backyard. So they went ahead and did some work back here. But when we do the test puts, we'll be able to determine, you know, exactly how much of that is fill and how much is native. There's a lot of trees back here that are, you know, substantial size. So I don't think that any, any filling was done here recently. It would be old fill and we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that when we do the test bits. Like I said, if I have to increase the size of the system, that can be done. It's an easily increased system, it's, it's easy to work with as far as um, increasing the system itself. So because all we have to do is extend it to the south, we got plenty of room to work with here. Now, as far as parking, uh, was one of the, one comment made that we only have um, the twelve, twelve spaces and we need fourteen. What we were doing was we were assuming that there's three, there's three spaces here that are, meet the regulations of being ten feet away from the building. They're, they're a typical style, I didn't show them striped, but they're typical um, size as far as, as far as the, the parking spaces go. And there is a twenty-four-foot aisle between this parking and this parking. So we were assuming that we could, we can include these in the parking, plus there's gonna be parking internal to the building for the, for the uh, the cars he's working on. One of the other things that came up at the first time we met was there was a question as far as if there was gonna be any painting of vehicles. He doesn't propose to do any, any bodywork or painting on vehicles here. It's strictly repair and sales. He, he, he contracts out any kind of bodywork uh, and painting to a, to another company. So that's not a concern, we won't be doing any, any internal painting or external painting on vehicles here. We are scheduled for April sixth for the Wetlands Commission. And And other than that, I'll be just be glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, I wanted to circle back with parking parking spots. We we. Made the same assumptions you did when coming up with fourteen spaces required. Weren't satisfied with the three cars, but then took a second look at it and actually saw that we kind of doubled it and. The required parking spaces would be nine. Six plus one for each of the bays and, you know, based on building size and use. But we did wonder if there was going to be any vehicle storage elsewhere on the property. You know, equals waiting for, yeah, yeah, just is it. Is a concern and then. Whether there was adequacy for emergency vehicles to turn around. Those were the the two questions we had there.
I guess I also. I'm curious from you and Mike's perspective, if the buffer can be legally reduced as small as he's requesting.
Yeah, I as I was. No, I think the provision in my right allows you to go from a hundred to fifty if there's a fence and dense planting.
We can't reduce more fifteen.
I I don't believe so. I think that's a variance that Mike would agree.
Right, yep, they they the buffer can't be reduced beyond fifty by this by the P and Z.
So it would require a ZBA application?
To to get it to reduce reduce to anything. Other than anything less than fifty, yes.
Okay.
Unless the proposed use was different because the the buffer requirements are based upon. They they change based on the the use, so. That would be the only path forward for that.
Okay, because it was it was our assumption that because this was a. A B two zone to the north that it wasn't, it wasn't. It wasn't required, but does it go by goes by the the actual use of the property?
Right.
Okay. Because as you can see, a fifty foot buffer would pretty much render the property unusable. You'd be basically taking away a hundred, be taking away about sixty feet of his hundred and sixty foot frontage, so.
I also have a question. Is that straight supposed to be handicap?
This is a handicap spot here.
And also a photometric plan. The lights pillars, Steve Jason property.
Yeah, we well, we were going to do that prior to. Prior to construction, usually when we submit those construction drawings, I would usually run those through the town and show. The photometric that's been done by the the electrical company who provides the.
Typically, that's part of your planning.
Well, we can get that done.
And wouldn't we need that look of the building now? Okay, well, this is still pending with wetlands and there is a number of things flagged for you you need to address. Was there anything else you wanted? To discuss at this point?
No, I we just wanted to get make sure and get the feedback from the commission before we go forward. So the next, excuse me, the next step would be go to ZBA and obvious obviously, we're always on already on for wetlands.
I can get you started with that application. Tomorrow, I'll give you a call if what you need.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We also have. Close the public hearing on PZ twenty twenty two dash two for two sixty eight South Main Street. We have a. Say option memo in our packets. From town staff or others. Ways we could proceed. To me, that needs some. So basically. We could conclude it is. We could move to approve. If we believed it was consistent with the town plans. Or we could deny. And one thing to note. Thanks to the two mics, I think we've got. An alternative path that allows an additional residence if there's commercial on the first floor. So there's somebody. Any discussion before we take a motion?
Question is, is occupancy allowable when there's an absence of a commercial establishment? Is the dwellings accessory use?
It's not, well, again, is accessory use as much as it makes sense.
But does one need to exist to allow the other?
I've seen situations where there's rehab going on buildings that they're putting the units, but leaving one.
Timeframe or it's a definite?
That the area would have to be set aside for commercial unit and yes, that has a for design of what the commercial space would be. That's what I'm hearing anyway. And further discussion? Somebody want to make either a motion to approve or deny?
I'm I'm going to make a motion to deny the application of PZ twenty twenty two oh two zone change application to. Sixty eight South Main Street from a B one to an R one owner applicant is given to this on the grounds that adding more residential. Zones into the Route five corridor is contradictory to the POCD.
Second to that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of denying the application? Any opposed to denial?
Both.
Okay, so we have two opposed and three in favor, so a denial stands. Next order of business is an informal discussion with the East Windsor Historical Society.
Excuse me, can I comment on your vote?
There isn't a comment period.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you, Gina, every one of you for denial. That's great. Pathetic. There's residential on the left side of me. I have residence on the second floor, there's residential. And you got I've been a proper only for thirty five years. Thank you. Got my tax dollars. Thank you for your votes.
We have an informal discussion with the East Windsor Historical Society.
Jay will be with you momentarily.
Okay.
Good evening, JR three JR Russo Associates. Here representing the East Windsor Historical Society. And I want to thank you before I get started here for giving us a little bit of time to come in and talk to you. About future plans down at the society and just a little bit of background information, I guess, before I get too much further. I think most of you are pretty familiar with the property that the society sits on and. My plan here, take a look. Scenic Road is is the location. I think everybody knows where the. Buildings are located in the academy, which I guess is the anchor building on the society property, which it's. It's all right here essentially in this corner and the academy is located here. There's a bar in the back and we've got the courthouse and the barber shop and the little building in the back with the crescent moon on it. Just to the rear and we've got the Osborne House here that was recently renovated and then the Barber Hill School. And the property for decades was basically that size. It was two acres, two and a half acres or something like that. It's pretty small. And got to the point where there wasn't really room to do much more with it and we're kind of running out of space. So an opportunity came along. About five or six years ago. And they were able to purchase about thirty six acres. Of the Morel farm behind the society, which I think most of us here probably knew as Dave Tyler's house. Beverly Tyler, who was a Morel Beverly Morel was family. Her mom and dad lived across the street, kind of across from the church on Scenic and Cemetery. And this was a piece of the farm that that Dave and Beverly built their home on and they farmed it for quite a long time. They retired, they moved on, left town. And he decided that he wanted to sell his house. Well, he couldn't find anybody to buy the house with forty somewhat acres of land and the farm. So as it turned out, the society was able to pick up about thirty six acres. Cut the house out. Dave was able to sell the house with the six acres. And the society now has all of Dave's farm buildings. There's one very old barn, which is supposed to be. Dairy barn that was part of the original Morel farm that dates back probably pre nineteen hundred. And then some other newer farm buildings, two other barns and a fairly large barn that I think. Dave was using the board horses and and training and so forth there. So with the acquisition of the of this additional land in these other buildings. The society started looking and thinking now, what are we going to do with this? And one of the issues that they've had for. Decades is sustaining the society and the academy. As as we all know, it costs a lot of money to keep our houses up. You can imagine trying to keep something like this up. And they've been very lucky over the years with members and paying their membership dues and donations and some benefactors and some very generous folks who. Always been willing to help out when they ran short. But, you know, looking to the future is, well, what are we going to do here? We've got some property. What can we do to generate some income to make this sustainable as years go forward? So. They had a lot of ideas and then they came to our office and we talked about it and did things and. Kind of looked at the zoning regulations and thought, well, I'm not really sure what we can do here, but strangely enough, one of the things that first hit me was there's some B two zone around there. Or B one zone, I forget B one, B two because of the center of Scenic. It was one of the villages, so. It was thought that maybe there was going to be some commercial there, but. Most of this land is all zone A and and it's been in agriculture for hundred well over a hundred years, so. I was kind of at a loss to be honest, so we decided to come in and meet with the staff and. Ruth pointed us in a little different direction. It was something where I wasn't looking. I just didn't see it, didn't look there and I was thinking for something totally different and that was. Growing more gray hair and I wasn't getting anywhere. I was just spinning my wheels, so. We came up with something that we think is workable. And it actually involves your farm regulations, which is not the section of the regulation. I was looking at every other one spot there, so. I put together. Here essentially a little memo that talks about the farm reg. I've got some other handouts here. It talks about the sections of the farm reg. And what they say. And how they could be interpreted. And it looks kind of like this could work. Even though. I was looking at every other section of the regulation but this section. But after reading through it and meeting with Ruth and talking to Ruth and Mike, we decided that it looks like this could work. Yeah, I've got some more here if anyone else that's interested in kind of following along. Pass these around. So that's that's one part of what I've got here and I'm going to give you one other piece. Of information that you can follow along and I took. The actual farm regulation and I highlighted some of the pertinent sections of the regulation. I just want to talk about a little bit. And I've got some more of these. Everybody's interested and they want to follow along, so. Going through the farm reg and we're looking at section three oh five dot seven. A three oh five is the beginning of the farmer regulation. And then we specifically get on the three oh five seven B dot five, but. Starting with the highlighted stuff that I gave you here right on the front page. The first paragraph of the farm regulation says purpose. And now we got to switch classes because I can't see the lead. Real five dot one talks about the purpose of your farm regulation, which you adopted back in twenty eleven. Yeah, I remember. Parts of those meetings and but honestly, I didn't think it was that long ago, but it was. But it says the purpose of this section is promote preservation of agricultural land. Support agriculture is an important viable business. In lifestyle within the town of East Windsor while preserving public health, safety and welfare. So before we go on from that, I do want to share with you is that the. The society does have a long term lease with a local farmer. To continue to farm the hay areas on this property, which are fairly substantial. There's there's an area back in here. There's this area here. There's an area here and I understand that they're even farming some of the land that was the Tyler property over here, products of the area as well. And that's a lease that the society has. And I believe it was a twenty year lease and I'm assuming it's got a reasonable closet and so it's going to continue to be farmed and stay in agriculture as. As hay production. So if we flip through this regulation, there's all kinds of things about animal units and how many nails, which animals we can have and. That doesn't really pertain to what we're doing, but if we go to page twenty one, section three oh five seven, it talks about other related uses. And then it says if we get on the B uses requiring a special use permit, well, one of them, number four farm store. So that might work here, but if we flip over and go to the rest. Item number five. Event hosting such as banquet and rental facilities. Well, that seems like it could work. And I didn't know it was there. I have looked through the farm regulations before, but I probably never read this deep into it and got to the last paragraph or page at any rate. And that seems like it's something that might fit here. So in looking at that and talking to these folks at this historical society, they had kind of thought that they might want to use one of these buildings and try and get some rental income to try and help them with the cost of keeping this facility running and and moving it forward and having a sustainable operation there and having some income. So the first handout I gave you talks about a number of different potential uses. And this is something that was talked about at some of their meetings. They gave a handout to all their members and just said, well, write down what you think we could do there or what might work there or what you might want to do there. And these are all the different things that I put here. Now, that's not to say that all these things are going to happen. I'm sure they're not. Some of the things that we had talked about early on before we ever figured out whether this was even feasible was a farmer's market. East Windsor used to have a farmer's market and I used to go to it once in a while. It was at Reeves. And I used to stop there on my way home from work and it was during the week where all the others around are on weekends and I liked it. It was good, but it didn't last long. I'm not sure why. For whatever reason, it existed for a year, maybe two seasons. I don't remember and then they didn't do it anymore. So a farmer's market is something that could be done here. It's certainly something that kind of is in keeping with with the use and the farm use and so forth. And that's something that they would entertain. Another thing, Future Farmers of America events, four H events, I think those things kind of fit fairly well. Maple sugaring demonstrations, agricultural products of East Windsor. A horse show, the ice cream social they have, and I'm sure a lot of you have been to that. These are some aerial photos of the last ice cream social that they had. If anybody wants to take a look at them, they had quite a turnout. And they do that every year, although I don't think with COVID, the last two years they haven't done it. So hopefully this summer they can get back to it, but they've been doing that for a long time. Rotary Club, Lions Club, Easter egg hunt, hay rides, art show, farmers museum, adult educational classes, blood drive, health fair, graduation for the high school. An emergency preparedness center for the town. The society has hired an architect, Lori Di Patista. She's here. She's looking at different things within this building, floor plans, how it might lay out, what we could do with it, how things might fit, early stages, but we've got some stuff to share with you. Graduations, youth, baseball, basketball, soccer. Now, I don't live at East Windsor. I live in Arlington and my kids grew up in Arlington. I was very involved in sports. And there was always a shortage of indoor facilities. There was never enough. There were more teams than there were facilities. Was never enough gym space, not enough basketball courts, not enough places to play indoor soccer. And we were lucky if we could get an hour a week. That was generally about all you got. I will say in East Windsor, I was always jealous that they always seemed to be able to get more basketball time than I could get in Arlington because they would allow their coaches keys to the gym at the middle school where we had to have the custodian there to unlock the school and it was a lot more regimented. So you guys were always lucky. You got more basketball time than I could ever get. But there's always been a shortage of the indoor facility. So that's something that could potentially be used for here. Veterans events, weddings, a high school reunion. You know, the kids touch a truck. I mean, there's, there's just a whole wide of things. You know, line dancing, square dancing, golf lessons, yoga class, biking, cross countries skiing, snow shoeing. So there's a whole bunch of things that could potentially fit. So we wanted to come to you tonight and kind of introduce you to this idea. And maybe get a little feedback, probably not tonight, but maybe through your staff as you think about it a little bit. And what they're looking to do is take the largest of the buildings, which is this one. And it's about eight thousand, eighty-five hundred square feet, eighty-six hundred square feet size, good sized building. It's in pretty good shape. It was used for horses, never had a floor. Oh yeah, it's way in the back. And I've got another. So if we look back at this plan again. So this is the front here, Scannick Road, Osborne House, the academy, caretaker's house, the barn, barber shop, courthouse, outhouse. And then we've got ORAC buildings back here. This building right here is supposed to be dairy barn. It's probably a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty years old, I had to guess, or something like that. And these other barns are newer metal buildings that Dave Tyler had put up. And this is the one that they're looking to renovate. So if we flip over and look at a larger scale, we are here. And now we're looking at a different view, I guess, if you will. Scannick Road is here, Cemetery Road is over here, and this building is located right here. And I've got some more handouts that I can share with you that you can all look at. There's actually two sets here. You can just see it. There's a color version, which is the one that I had up first. Color the building in yellow. And then there's the black and white versions there. So they're looking to renovate this. So a lot of things have to happen to make all this work. We've got to bring a sewer in here. We can see sewer service area. We can do that. And we've got a plan that shows that. Actually, we have an application and we'll be able to allow us to do that. We've got to put in some parking and some paving. We've got to have landscaping and we've got to have buffers and screening and lighting and drainage and you know, typical site plan, which you can see in the site plan. We're not that far along now. We do have we did want to come and talk to you and just introduce this whole idea, this thought to you. So you can start thinking about it rather than just come in with an application and put it in front of you and go, okay, what's this? I'm really looking for some feedback from you as to, you know, how you feel about this, what you think uses you'd be comfortable with. This is going to be a special permit application for you. So you have a lot of latitude. There's a lot of things you can do with this. You can say, you know, no, we don't want this, but yes, this seems okay. No, we don't want that. But yeah, that might work. And and that's really kind of what we're looking for here in terms of if this moves forward. You know, what kind of a event hosting could we do here? How do you feel about it? You know, hours of operation, all those kinds of things. Those are the kinds of things that we want to talk here a little bit about. So basically what would happen is this area would be renovated. We showed a conceptual plan with some parking over here. A driveway to come around and get back out. So we have some circular traffic flow at the back. A as things move forward, that's not going to change. And again, we've got something there that the society themselves came up with that just lists a whole bunch of different uses that they kind of thought of that came up with at one of the, one of their meetings. So as I said, we're, we're looking for you to take a look at all this information. Put some thought into it as to what you think might work there, what doesn't work. Maybe we've missed something that you think would fit nicely there. Don't know. And I think we'd like to give you a little insight in terms of architecture, what this might look like. So right now, this is a metal building. I mean, it's a very simple kind of utilitarian kind of building. It was something that Dave, I think, got some grant money for somehow to put up maybe through the USDA. I'm not sure. And he had his horses in here and he stored some equipment in there, but it was a very basic metal build and obviously that's not going to work for what the society wants to do. So Lori Di Patista has put together, their architect put together some basic floor plans and renderings that we could just introduce those to you at this point. So you could take a look at those. And and again, give it some thought, but we're looking to really turn it into something that looks like a barn. And this is a historical society. We're on a farm. We want to go like a barn. So that's, that's the plan.
Good evening. My name is Lori Di Patista. We have the honor of showing you our concept design for the new barn area. As you know, if you've been by the facility, the barn has a metal kind of look to it. So our, our design here, our concept is to foam the outside and cover it up with wood. So we don't have a more vertical presentation. I understand the color is going to be a barn red. I wrote another color that they'll give you the outs. But it's going to basically kind of blend in with the theory that all our little barns and roads and things that these move with it. This is the view that faces the north view. We're going to have a twelve by twelve garage door system. We'll be covered by a carport area and also have a main entry that will get into the main facility. The facility is actually a little larger.
Going from memory, if that we remember. Not that great at all.
So here's kind of the floor plan too as well. So here's, I would say in the north side, we have our twelve by twelve garage, our main entry and our portico area. So this area here is, I think this is where all the horses are. This is the main area, about five thousand square feet. Basically, this is all three spans. It's already built for the snow roads that we have here in Connecticut. It's in pretty good shape. It just needs a little TLC. So this main area here will just basically be have a concrete floor to it. So it can accommodate pretty much all the events that the historical society is doing. On this side here, well, for all the folks that could be in the building, we have our bathroom areas. We have men's and ladies'. We also have it equipped with challenge. That we, if the town needs the building for any reason, they have the ability to host folks if they lose their power or something like that. They have a place that they could stay. This area here, which is on the, it's on the north, south, east side. This is all going to be windows and glass. So this area here, you can get opportunities to see the whole view. Going back to our written on exterior, so this is the front that heads north. You see most of the, most of the historical area. We have the garage doors, that main entry, the carport area. And this is the backyard where that open area leads you to see the north, northeast side. This is on the other side, which heads more west, almost the same type of a format. We have a large door, twelve by twelve, that allows the, you know, you talk about having some power shelves there. They can draw through and then the main entry. And this is the kitchen area. So there's going to be kitchen area that will basically host catering. So folks who may have a no wedding, a bar mitzvah, they can also bring a catering. So it's not going to be professional cooking, it's catering. This is the back view that heads the south. What about the northwest areas? This is all glass. All doors. So folks can sit down and enjoy the view. And pretty much preserves the building, shows a good way of enjoying the building. We also have a group in there. So we can get the old barn little type of our goal also is to take a look at using solar energy on the building as well as working with the geothermal, which is the ability to cool it as well as heating. Because all the surface area on the floor area is concrete, we are going to put maybe heat in it. So we have the opportunity to, you know, concrete is really good and versatile and has low maintenance, but it is cold. So for all the activities that we're envisioning, the indoor activities, especially during the winter months, this place will be well heated. And the geothermal gives you the opportunity to get cooling in there as well. Our designs on top, we were thinking about putting some big things in there. So we also have that more concrete type of farm setting.
Where should you tell me, Aaron? There are all your utilities.
Well, we have above this, it's a second story area. Look at Jay's line, the electrical comes into this side. So I have electrical even here. And radiating heat runs off of boiler systems. So we can definitely put those upstairs and you know, above this area. We have about five, six feet of clear space before it really drops. We definitely put those in there. Along with, you know, such as geothermal, that's going to be run by the wells on our own property. And basically that would set up the second, second area.
Geothermal is pretty expensive.
It is. It has a one life to it, especially utilizing what's in the ground already, using the temperature of the ground to keep cooling. It's a clean energy method.
I don't see a lot of, it doesn't matter. I don't see a lot of people using it at all. It's just the cost is just so much.
A lot of the commercial stuff that we do, they can use it. The only ones that we did recently was Avon Public Library. And they had, I think, twenty-five wells. They've been working on property is pretty small, but they use every inch of that property for the law.
So you obviously got the jackhammer and all the floor up with the ready to eat or the kind of, on the floor.
Yeah. So it's all
Not that it matters, but
I'm sorry. I just asked for the utility.
Just
Got in your pool.
Yeah. All the utilities come in the, would be the east side, judge. The, which is the low side of the building. So the sewer goes out there. There's got to be a pump station, unfortunately, a car that pumps it up to Stephen Grove.
And your well into why?
See, you got a well already. So we have a well. Believe we could use it. We don't know that for sure yet, but that's the plan is we'd be using existing well. We will need probably a generator. Because we do have a sewer pump, we've got a well and we're using this for some kind of a function. We've got to have an alternative means of power, the power itself. So and that was the other thought of being able to use it as an emergency center at some point if the town needed a space. Having all of this and having that much space and having a generator, the ability to bring people there and have sanitary facilities and water and a place to at least prepare food. And a large square footage might make some sense. So it's, it's got, it's got a lot of potential uses and that was one of the thoughts that
It's a building in town. Pretty close. Except for your barn, I know.
So, but no, there is no floor there. The, the last heating system in there was horse. It was, there was never any heat. All it ever had was some electric, which even now is marginal. The lighting wasn't very good. So so it'll all be redone. So the floors, all the interior, all the exterior and the roof. Basically, we're using the frame as well. It's in good shape.
That's, that's all three stand trust, right? What's the clearance to the bottom of the trusses?
To the top of the truss?
To the bottom. So I'm thinking of beer. You're talking about like having sporting events there. Somebody kicks a ball. How high is it before they hit the truss? Well, anything. So JD, the other question I had is the biggest question you guys are going to have are butters.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
That is a very good question. And some of them are here. I think John Burnham has called every single one of them and talked to them. I think they're all aware of what the society is thinking about doing. And I think their plan is, is to make them part of this plan. And and certainly, you know, they want to be good neighbors. This is something that can work if, if we've got butters who are opposed to it or are simply, you know, just, just not in favor of what's going on. They don't want that to happen.
So I know you're applying up to the Tyler house and then you have the old, a note for your barn. I don't know what that now.
But yeah, the folks in the Tyler house are here.
People on Scannick. So you have three houses.
One, two.
Two houses on Scannick and one on Scimita.
And then you have the one that's on say, big ones on Scimita. Two on Scannick, but isn't there the one that used to be a horse barn? Like it's that way back.
We can have a question and answer.
Right. I got a few more questions here.
Can we address it right now or?
So just to go forward just a little bit more. Certainly, you know, we want to make the neighbors part of what we want to do here and be sure that do everything we can to make them comfortable with what's going on. But and you also have a number of safeguards in your regulations. And in fact, we just talked about one of those with an earlier application. One of them is a buffer requirement. There's a fifty-foot minimum buffer requirement between residential There's a fifty-foot minimum buffer requirement between residential use and. I'm not sure that this actually applies in this use, but we're showing it, we're going to provide the fifty-foot buffer. Which includes screenings and plantings and so on and so forth. The building itself, which I think Lori mentioned, will be spray foam insulated. When we put the thing back together, so it's going to have a sandwich of spray foam. You have festival reading requirements that we have to be able to maintain at the property line, which. I know you're all aware of, as I as well, because we've dealt with it on many other applications that came before you. And the back wall of the building, as Lori showed you. The west wall that faces the two closest, the two closest residents. Is going to be a solid wall. There's no doors, there's no glass, it's just a solid wall, it'll have. Sheathing on the outside, new sheathing on the inside with a sandwich of spray foam. So that would be this entire wall right here. So, yes, we're aware of the neighbors and.
And you've been talking to the neighbors?
They have talked to them, yes, in fact, we called them all before this meeting, told them we thought they should come. Well, there are some neighbors here that want to talk, so you're willing to let them?
One other question, so for all the previous events that you've held there, that's all been done with just temporary permitting then?
You know, I'm a member of the historical society, but you know what, I don't know. I'm not sure.
Probably no permits.
Yeah, that's the latest town order. This is over here forty years, I can tell you some real stories.
So we are here, a lot of the neighbors, but we were kind of led to believe that it would be a presentation and. Led to believe that we wouldn't be able to really present a statement of concerns.
It's informal, it's just. And there's nothing really pending.
Okay.
It's just a FYI kind of concept, but I think for everybody here.
I'll jump in then, as my name is Gail, what they're. My husband Lester, we've lived in the old parsonage, which directly abuts that property and the blue barn is eighty feet from our back door. So any type of activity that's large in scale would severely impact us. You're talking about having events such as reunions and weddings, et cetera. What does that lead to? Noise? Those happen on a regular basis, they're looking to bring income in. So does that mean every weekend, we're going to have Saturday, Friday night and Saturdays. Two hundred people, eighty feet from my back door, loud music, drinking. And if you've been to a wedding recently, you know half the people leave immediately. So now it just doesn't impact me as an budding neighbor. It impacts everybody in Scantic on all those roads. We have a lot of bicyclers, people that bike, we have a lot of joggers, we have walkers. So events like that, that's would severely impact us. You put up outdoor lighting that, you know, is on half the night. On a barn that large, now that's shining into our yard, potentially our bedrooms during the summer. That happened when they did the Osborne House. It took a year for them to start turning off lights at twelve midnight that were on till midnight. So we do have a lot of concerns. So I haven't listed them all, and we're just reaching out to all our other neighbors, not just the butters. Because for that amount of traffic and potentially those types of conditions, it's just not impacting us directly.
The traffic would be on the state highway to Scantic Grove, right?
No, they have another entrance to the other side. Yep.
Could we go back to a permit, did we permit pulls on these other events?
So Frank, I'll answer that, John Burnham, so. For the past twenty years, they've had an ice cream social. It started off with the ding dong card and two boxes of ice cream sandwiches, and it got as big as that one does. Did we come here and do a special use permit for the ice cream social? I'm going to say we didn't. I, I don't believe we did, if you've never seen me before, we probably didn't. Did we, we thought we did everything else, right? We got the cop, and we got the everything, the porta potties, and we got all the rest of it, but. The society at this point is truly, that run the ice cream social, it's all volunteers. The Osborne House was a pretty big undertaking, and as a volunteer group, most of the people there. It takes a while to tweak it, to get it sobered, it's right. We've always been responsive, when someone comes to us and says something, we try to address it. So, but to answer your question, I'm going to say, I have a bet on that, I would say. Not everything that's ever happened there, event wise, is that a permit.
So I can, I just want to add to that, I can confirm for sure, because I asked. A wine tasting was held there right before the pandemic. And I went over, because I was concerned, they're serving alcohol. Went over there and asked the person, I said, you know the permit? He couldn't run away from me fast enough. So I get, my answer, I assumed was no, since he couldn't say yes. I give him credit for not lying, and he just pretty much ran the other way, so.
So I understand you need a permit for alcohol, but you need a permit to have an ice cream social? It's ice cream.
That I don't know, that's one question.
There's a temporary event permit, if the activities open to the public.
Really?
Yeah. Joe's in the package store, what has it to do with Ben coming for a permit? But that's even serve liquor, the amount of people we have.
The farmers markets had to come before us to get. But that's alcohol. No, the farmers market at the train station had to pull a permit. Driving museum.
Really? So we had to make sure they had adequate parking.
I guess I'm, I'm just as guilty as them. We've had a walk for eleven years, never even knew that we would have to pull a permit. Of course, we can serve alcohol, but we've had the attendance up to a thousand people. That, never, huh?
Kind of be in a rotation, it's typically we circulate. You know, for partner.
We used to do it right here in this parking lot.
There's somebody.
I guess I'm guilty too.
Is there a site plan or a zoning plan in existence for this project?
No, this is just an informal discussion.
It's been work, being worked on for over six months without any plan at all. And I can tell you, my neighbors here and then there, that Rich told me the other day that it clogged up his whole sewer, so he's, could get water to his house. Because of all the escalation going on there. And then he, when he told me that story, the next day I turn on my faucet upstairs, black stuff comes out. Because all the drainage, there's no gutters on that building, on that barn. And before Dave had a block result of about thirty feet with trees, everything got mowed down. So everything drains in my backyard, her backyard, and Rich's backyard. Because the way they cut it with a dozer, everything is just all the runoff. And, you know, it's just a swamp now. And there's no trees in parts, just like on the other side, when they bought the church property, mowed all them down. And then all the trees on the other of the lot, that was on town property, and there's like sixty, you got a lot there, and it's just a wind farm now. So if they want to build this, if they want to buy my house, I'm happy. Really? I'm not going to put up with that, waiting every weekend, listening to worse music.
Yeah, I would just ask, and you know, we'll be coming with more statements, but, and more.
At this point, there's nothing, you know, on the record, so this is just the conversation.
But I would just ask you, how would you feel if it's agricultural, it had been rezoned? Maybe twenty-five, thirty, we're trying to find out when, I think it was originally residential. And we said, we were for it, agricultural, great, we'll never see another house back there. With this plan, I'd take thirty houses behind me before I take this. Think about if you had a, a building this size that could house, what, two, three hundred people? Eighty feet from your doorstep, a potential for an activity there a couple times a weekend. How would you feel? And how is your quality of life going to be affected?
At this point, it's a conversation, it's not.
Right, I am just pointing it out.
When, you know, when Ellsworth was around, that he had his water company there, and that was all in aquifer. So then Dave comes in and changed, gets on the zoning board, and gets on the wetland commission. Next thing, he has to build a barn there, and, you know, my mother went nuts. And the other two barns, they don't even pull permit. I went to town hall, they shook their head, like, what's going on? I said, it's already all built. And he didn't have a zoning or a building permit.
We're just saying that this is going to be in our backyard. So if we want to enjoy our backyard, we won't be able to. That's what we're saying. So we feel we pay tax on our property, we shouldn't have to be against somebody else's. You're not against the concept, but not in your backyard.
You know what, there's a lot of property on Route Five, and a lot at one forty that this type of development is good for. It's commercially zoned, that's what they're turning this into. They're turning this into a commercial effort under an agricultural special use permit. And you just denied somebody to go residential on Route Five, South Main Street, because it doesn't fit in with your plan. Does, does commercial, this type of commercial use really fit in? With, we're basically a residential zone, and to the comment he made about a couple houses, a couple lots, or B one. I have a B, I guess, two property. It was, it was zoned like that, so the people who owned it, like forty, fifty years ago, she could have her nursery school in it. Which she had for years. Mr. Stoughton's property was the same, his is zoned that way. He had his historic society, and he rented an apartment. It wasn't like some big business zoned property. So that statement was a little misleading, I think, to even enter that into any conversation, even though I'm not, I know it's not the record. Just wanted to share.
Is there anyone else who wants to share something?
I would just, I, I put a little positive spin on it.
Identify yourself for the record.
Tyler Nets, and my wife Jennifer, we're in David Tyler's old house at nine seven ten road. You know, we two had a lot of the same emotions when this was first brought to us, and. A little overwhelmed by, you know, we all of a sudden, we're thinking, oh my god, rock concerts every night, every weekend. Seven days a week, emotions, and. You know, and I think if you break down the list a little bit and see what the possibilities are. As far as even our children, right? And some of the things that we can do for the kids, using this kind of a event. I think it's, I think it would be a really, really good use of that property to bring in the kids. Show them a different life, show them some different things, you know, the four age events, some of the farmers markets. You know, these, this is just. You know, it's, it's easy to get, yeah, just possibilities, right? It's not good, it's not like seven days a week, you know, until midnight, rock concerts, that kind of thing. I understand everybody else, I totally understand everybody's concerns that are closer. We're not as close to the blue barn as everybody else is. But I think. You know, I think it would, I think it would be a great addition, especially for the children and getting involved in the schools and. You know, maybe, you know, utilizing it in that kind of a way, so.
So.
Sort of just a little positive.
So then the question I would ask, they said it's a way to fund their expenses. So are they going to charge the town for all those events? Because if they aren't, those aren't the events that would be the key ones that they would go after. It would be weddings, those type of events where you can make a fortune. If you're just renting out a barn and the people are responsible for getting their own caterer, then you get a flat rate. And that's where the big concern comes in, so if you're just doing.
That's one out of thirty possibilities that may or may not happen at that facility. I mean, you could do a, a nice craft show where you could charge a fee for the vendors and. You know, have people coming through, you could even charge for parking, I mean, there's many, many, many ways that you could generate income. That don't include a wedding, right? So, just a, just a, just another way of to looking, of looking at it.
I'm saying, with all that land, they got to move it. Go put it up near the horse barn. Not in my backyard, that's what I'm saying. I got to live there.
You could also use property on Route Five or one forty.
Right.
They, the person who is funding this owns half of Route Five. They certainly could find property there with a, a view toward, you wouldn't see the river, but there's, there's pasture type land out that way. It's a commercial zone, that's what you were implying in the last thing that, that you wouldn't give that guy. So this goes back to, it's a commercial enterprise, my agricultural land. They're doing it to make money, they admitted that, they need to fund themselves. So how is that part of the plan of the town? When they're surrounded all by basically residential area, if you look at the zoning now.
Well, I think you have the feel for how the butters feel about this, and. Is there somebody else who wants to talk?
I'll speak for, if I can, I did, I felt it was very important, because I, I know how Gail and Lester feel. And, and different ones, I thought it was very important, I was actually advised against this. It says, I need to call these people, and Gail, I called you up and left a message. And you didn't get back.
I didn't, you talked to Lester.
And I called Lester, I left a message, and Lester got back, and I said, this is my speech, I'm pretty sure on how I, I word this. At six thirty on Tuesday, at eleven rise, we're going to have an informal discussion. I also said, I do not know where we are on the agenda, because sometimes these meetings can go to eleven o'clock. And I said, you may or may not have the opportunity to speak, this is quite a nice blessing, let, have this like, this is very nice. So I did, I talked to Gail, I talked to Scott Daniel. That's Bill's relatives, they own Anoprio's Place, the Horse Barn. And Scott was excited that this could possibly happen, because he has, he can see great use for it. Bill, you were okay with that?
Yeah, I'm not living right next to it either.
Bill's the hay guy, he's our hay guy, he has a seventeen-year, twenty-year lease with us to cut the hay out of this property. And I talked to Richie, I could talk to Richie, who I talked to quite a bit. I got, I got the message. You got, I gave you a message, that's pretty much my speech, right?
Yeah, well, Rich told me, my phone was.
John, nobody said you didn't talk.
Well, it's good of you that involved with your neighbors.
So the sooner we, all the cards get on the table, the sooner we can redeem it, that's all.
Well, you got some issues.
I got, I have one question. Purchase this property, and obviously you're looking ways to make some money. Could you give me a, a general background of the financial status of this whole project, and where this money's coming from, or where it's come from to purchase this? I mean, you don't have to do that.
Yeah, that's not, that's not, let's just say that, it's a wonderful opportunity to do that for that. Donations, a couple of things that are on that list. Oh, we're applying for grants at Anwar and Carroll Hall and Jason, they've been there, and we're applying for. For grants that, that could make this happen. Jay and Lori are doing a great job on the zoning and the, and the buffer and the parking, trying to scatter the parking around. Bunches smaller lots, we're trying to be, we know it's going to irritate some neighbors. We're going to put in the plantings, we're going to put in fences, we've already put the herbivores in our summer then. So anyways, it's, these ones are historical society, you know. It costs money to run show, seventy-five thousand bucks a year to turn a key at that place, just to play the electricity controls. Pretty close, just to turn the key, pay the insurance and, and.
Volunteers doing the labor too.
Most, yes, yes.
So you're looking to generate income to support the historical society, not.
Yeah.
Generate income to become billionaires.
This building would be similar to what Scout Hall model is, where half, half of the time Scout Hall, the building at the beginning was rented out to pay the bills. The other half was given free to the youth groups of the town, but these ones are forever. If a youth group wanted for a weekend, we just didn't rent it, we just, if they had a blue and gold bag or something, they had. So this is sort of based on that model. We are a historic society, we do want to have the displays and, and promote history of the town, that's our mission, that's our five oh one mission. But we do also have to provide funding to keep this alive. And I gotta, Jim, I gotta say that about the geothermal, if you think geothermal costs a lot, go to the gas station right now, fossil fuel. Fossil fuels.
That will come down eventually too.
But fossil fuels are gonna bury us. The geothermal's gonna be very expensive putting in, but over time, thirty years from now, when I'm out of the picture for sure. They'll be still running that place.
I just feel New England's not a good place for geothermal, it just doesn't, it's not efficient as much years, but anyways.
That's the thing, when it comes to weddings and banquets and stuff, aren't there, there's, I think there's a slew of permits that are required with that, isn't there? So just even offering a special use permit here, you still need to pull a liquor permit, you still need to pull a food permit. There, there's other permits involved, um, so by granting a special use permit for that. How do we guarantee that all these other permits are still obtained? You know, because if they're now a use by right, uh, we would never know when it's rented out or anything that, for any kind of a follow up for all the other permits that are required.
Looks like Scout Hall, like I said, it's kind of the same deal, just why don't.
Yeah, but nobody's gonna have a wedding at Scout Hall, right, I mean, this is purposely geared toward large gatherings. Right, that's what their focus is.
I can actually answer that, Scout Hall was originally built for all three hundred people. The Scout Hall building committee themselves said, forget this stuff, we're gonna go to two hundred people. Just, just because it's too many, we have many, many, many weddings here. So, from sweets, from little kid birthday parties up to, uh, graduations and, and even funerals. That, all of that in that building, and some corporate training for. Ocean and different things during the week, which would be very low impact, which could happen in this building, which could generate funds for the society. So, that's a bad question.
Does this keep the, the police department, uh, who's gonna guide the traffic? Our taxes gonna have to pay for that? That's why you need all these extra permits when you hold an event.
So, to your point, who monitors all of that, because just as I shared with that wine tasting, that was pretty like. Away, don't ask. So there's a lot of things I think that are of concern, and for folks, I understand that. Thank you for being sympathetic about your, for the people who are at the property, I wouldn't be so quick to dismiss the concern about. Um, alcohol consumption at large events. Last, have you been to a wedding, I mean, not like with the COVID, but at any wedding, half those people leave inebriated, that means they're gonna be out on the roads right around us. So it's just another concern.
At that event like that, you're supposed to have a police officer present.
Right.
Also, make sure you don't have a underage.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, a lot of these requirements are for public safety.
Well, when they hire a police officer to direct traffic and do crowd, uh, you know, traffic control, they're not allowed to ask any group or DUI. You know, so.
I, I know this is informal, but, and you know where we're headed, that there's opposition, and I'm sure there'll be more folks. In opposition too, as we kind of shared some of this additional information we learned.
The truth concerns, because we're, it's in our backyard.
We had you.
I hope you guys understand that. So, I mean, just to kind of read the room, it's, it's really the noise level that's gonna be the issue, you're, you're not opposed to using it. Uh, our privacy in our own backyard.
Well, probably traffic coming in and out, and I'll say it more in this one weekend, it's gonna be every.
Possible alcohol consumption, noise, if you've got any type of music. Um, a noise fence going on on a regular basis. Um, and lighting being, coming into your yard. I, I will share that although people may address things, it takes over a year to get people to turn off their outside lights that shut, shine into your. Bedrooms during the summer, so you can't even keep your shade up.
My picture window in my kitchen is right there. So I have to pull my shades down for my privacy, so if there's events back there, where, why do I gotta hide? You know?
And there's, when we say buffer, like I said, eighty feet, I think it's about eighty feet from my back door. To, to the fence. Eighty feet from, from your barn to my fence, okay, so eighty feet from, so there's not that much room for a buffer, and I don't consider. I, you did say you planted herbivores, which you did, I don't just have, consider that, you know, one row of herbivores, like. A great buffer to, to drown out people, like two hundred people.
Well, music, there is farther, that is, like.
That's another problem, like, can you have music in those barns? There should be like a really high fence on my backside, because all the other barns on the side are all metal bars, and the sound just bounces.
Well, they were talking about only.
Alright, yeah.
Right.
But anyway, that, if the project starts to take shape. Then it's, and they come before us with something, then it's time to consider all these things. And it's good they heard it from their neighbors, so they know what to factor in, in their planning.
Well, have the consideration, that's all we ask.
And they, I.
What did, what did, what did up there, their house or something, or the horse farm?
Yes, the potential applicant, if they go forward as per due law, it's commercial.
So what's, they can't be building now that, you know, permit, until there's permits applied for?
Right.
Well, they've already been selling topside off property, and you know, it's probably done at least fifty thousand dollars with the work there, that's maximum expectation, you know.
So. So the expectation is we won't see any more excavation back there until they've gotten approval?
What do they need to excavate? Well, they have to stay under a hundred cubic yards, right? And I've been out there in response to a complaint, um, and.
Sure.
And John has agreed that the material that he dug out of the barn is.
Maintain on site?
Or put on other properties, less than a hundred cubic yards, uh, you know, like the Eastern East Fields and whatnot. Uh, to maintain. So it stays on the property.
So I'm gonna address that. Some of that material came out, out from inside that barn, which had nothing to do with that condition on the outside. Some of that was just.
I know.
Yes. And not the best stuff, and that has.
Taking it to the fields.
Stuff that's left on site is just spectacularly topside, which we haven't sold one teaspoon of. And most of it, we want to use on the property.
Yeah.
There's, there's twenty, twenty acres up there of.
Farming.
Farm land that was maybe not maintained as well as it could have been back in the day, and there's humps and there's bumps, and we'd like it to be a more flatter hayfield. And I spoke to Bill about that.
Okay, well, I think we've completed the informal discussion, and once Jay, you have some.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and, and listening, and we look forward to maybe hearing some feedback through staff that you might have for us, and. Thank the neighbors for coming and, and expressing their concerns, and certainly we're gonna take all of that into consideration.
Right.
And my guess is that before you see an application, uh, you may see another informal, and we may see a meeting with the neighbors as well, so.
Jay, and I'm gonna add too. I, I've invited Ruth, I've invited the building officials, I've invited everybody. You could just call me, or if you see us there, we'll give you a tour of the whole, the whole facility, which is really pretty cool.
Once again, thank you, thanks for your time.
For coming and sharing with everybody. Um, Drew, you can come in and correspond. Correspondence, business meeting. Nothing, executive session, nothing. So, uh. Jason, did you have something you wanted to?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay.
I don't need to.
So, a motion to adjourn.
Second, Lori.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, the meeting has adjourned at eight thirty.